We're live on the web.
Okay, can I consult your tag?
It's in the chat for nine three. And keep it all in private.
I'll move that the actions outlined in attachment three of the OCC report two seven one zero be approved. And and it'll be all kept in private.
Subject to twenty four.
Subject to twenty four of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Um, yes.
Thanks, Council Race. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please.
That's carried.
Okay. That is carried.
Yep, that's carried.
Great.
Would you like to do your housekeeping tidy up from yesterday and then we could go back?
Yeah, let's do the housekeeping tidy up. Can you tell me what the housekeeping tidy up is, please?
Sorry, my apologies. So if somebody who voted on the prevailing side of items eight forty and eight forty one could move reconsideration, please?
Eight forty and eight forty one. On the Scona district plan and on the to repeal plans in Scona districts. So in favor, can you please vote for reconsideration?
I will move reconsideration.
Can get some.
Need a second?
Yes. Okay, please vote to reconsider.
Counsel Paquette.
No, because they.
Counsel Paquette, can I just confirm that you've left the meeting? If so, we'll show you as absent. Okay, we'll show Counsel Paquette as absent and when the motion comes back on the floor, explain why.
Okay. Please vote or display the vote. Here's carried. Okay, now who moved this earlier on? Was Constable Rutherford moved it, right?
Yeah, yep.
Constable Rutherford, can you please move it again, both of them?
Yes, I'm happy to move that Charter bylaw two four zero one zero be read a third time.
Second. Thank you. So it's back it's back on the floor and the reason for the reconsideration is Counsel Paquette had intended to abstain because he did miss part of the public hearing. However, he was in attendance when this was voted on. So thank you for your indulgence. We are now reconsidering the vote. Counselor Paquette has left the meeting and will be shown as abstaining as per the MGA. It's a may. May, may not must.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, no, please vote.
Eight forty and eight forty, yes, eight forty, eight forty one districts or Scona district plan and repeals.
And Constable Rutherford moved both.
Yes.
Okay, got it, good.
It it is definitely both of them. The screen just didn't let us split it. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried.
He's not in the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
So where did we leave off at?
There's a motion on the floor for seven eight.
Seven eight. Okay, we're still on seven eight. Okay. What was the motion, sorry?
Yeah, I was wondering if I can restate that.
At the pleasure of the chair.
At my pleasure, sure.
Thank you. So the motion should read that the mayor on behalf of city council write a letter to the Minister of Seniors, Community and Social Services requesting one data as related to outcomes achieved through the Navigation and Support Center. Sorry, actually, the only thing I want to restate is part three, an up-to-date copy of the Government of Alberta's Shelter Accommodation Expectations. Everything else is the same. Is that, does that work or do I?
Can you just, if you could just say number three slowly, I will type it and we will update it.
Okay, an up-to-date copy of the Government of Alberta's Shelter Accommodation Expectations. Do I need to explain why? No, okay. Oh, yeah.
Please, please explain.
So the so the distinction here is just, you know, kind of keeping in line with seeking information that's not necessarily out accessible in public and this is more, I think, relevant to the question of the information request. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Prinspe.
My name is still up there from before. I had already had the opportunity to ask my questions. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Constable Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you to administration. I I first of all really appreciate this motion coming forward. I know that we're talking about the outcomes achieved through Navigation Support Center. From your reading of this motion, would we be looking at or something that occurs to me is sort of the different outcomes from specific shelters as well in terms of which housing, which approaches to getting people into housing are most effective? Do you think that that there's scope for that in this in this question? Do you think there's value in that data? So basically, you know, where where along that line are we seeing the greatest success of people getting getting into housing? Or do you think that's included?
I'm not sure I fully understand your question. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm not stating it very well. So we know that shelters are now intended to be housing focused. Do we have any data on which shelters are best achieving those housing outcomes?
I don't think we have that information and so I think you need to be a bit more explicit if you want to have that information for the entire shelter ecosystem focusing on the Navigation and Support Center. Because there's it's a bit of a it's knitted together how they're all supporting one another. How different clients are and which caseloads and things. So I think that if you were looking for specific efficacy of different shelter operators, you might have to have the the motion explicitly say that.
Yeah, that's true. That that, yeah, I that expands the scope. I think I'm just trying to think of. Yeah, any any thought, any like. yeah, any, any thought, any, like, would there be value in that in terms of any of the systems planning we're doing, or any?
I want to think about our municipal lane. When I think of the work that we are doing in terms of our housing needs assessment and things like that. Yeah, I
Maybe not.
I don't.
Okay, no, 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 that's helpful. I mean, I think, I think keeping this focused on information as requested makes a lot of sense. So, so nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so there is it for questions. Anyone to speak? Counselor Salvador?
Yes, just to speak to this. So again, want to thank Counselor Tang for bringing it forward. I know a number of us have, have asked for this information specifically in point one of this motion a number of times. So to me, it makes sense to have it formalized in a motion. I've heard that there is a willingness from the province to be open and transparent about the efficacy of the navigation centers. So I, I think that this kind of data will help us gain a better understanding of those outcomes being achieved by this model. I think it's really important that we dig deeper than just knowing the number of people who have accessed the center, and the number of people who have been referred to services. You know, I, I think it's possible that getting this information may illuminate some of the gaps and backlogs and wait lists that exist for people who are looking for help when they're accessing the navigation center, whether that is getting into housing, addictions treatment, or other forms of healthcare. And I was actually just reflecting on this motion in the context of some of the conversations that I've had in community recently related to safety and well-being, where the navigation center will often come up and, and is pointed to as a solution, and then the solution. Which is then followed by community members saying and asking, well, if the province has a navigation center, you know, why am I still seeing folks sleeping rough in my neighborhood? Which is followed by another question as to whether or not people who are accessing the navigation center are actually being transitioned off the streets to housing treatment and other supports. So without having the data that's being asked for in this motion, I don't have a good answer for folks when, when they're asking that. So my hope is that getting this information will aid in public transparency and clarity. Without that, I think we continue to have incomplete information and unclear answers to these urgent challenges in our communities, which really limits our ability to have honest conversations about solutions. So really appreciate this being brought forward and looking forward to eventually getting this information.
Thank you. Counselor Tang to close?
Just very briefly, I think I said what I need to say, and I, you know, support Counselor Salvador points there. I, you know, I think I, in the community, I get caught both sides of, you know, it's working or it's not working, and I have absolutely no idea, like, what, like, what is, what, what is the truth? And I, and I also reflect on the fact that oftentimes when we, you know, talk about these issues, and granted, this is not city's primary responsibility, but we are talking about an, a system, a housing, a house system. And I think it's unfortunate because I feel like we often talk about it in sort of a subset, you know? Where is our influence? And so our, our information is limited, our data is limited, and sometimes it's hard to, for, you know, for me, certainly, sometimes even articulate what the big picture is and because I, I just, I don't know what I don't know. And I think the effort, the intent here is just try to fill a bit of that information gap, seeking information on things that we, that general public doesn't really have access to. But overall, I think it will help with, you know, public transparency on this really complex challenge that even if it's not our primary responsibility, it is probably the number one issue that we get asked all the time. So urge my colleagues to support this, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. It is carried. Are there any other subsequent motions? Okay, seeing none, so we concluded seven eight. Now we are we have the subsequent remaining on the bylaws, right? Okay. All right, subsequent on bylaws. District plans. Who would like to start? Counselor Nak, you want to start?
Oh, probably, sure.
Sure, why?
Sure, sure, let's, let's find. Yeah, sure am. Uh, here we are, sure. Do you have, do you have mine somewhere, I think?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's the right one. There's a lot in here.
Yeah, there's, there's multiple bullet points.
What questions? Sorry, go ahead.
Is it the, yours is the one with the?
Sorry.
Yeah, we got it.
Got it, okay. Got it? Good. Okay, Counselor Nak?
Yes, uh, with the, here we go. That administration conduct engagement and prepare potential amendments to I'm not going to, all, all the charter bylaws for all the fifteen district plans, one through fifteen, I'm not going to read out each of those. And here's the bullet points. Bullet point number one, to refine the location and maximum width range of nodes and corridors in the developing, redeveloping areas as identified in the city plan, as well as the radius from LRT stations and reflect this using gradient indicated indications on maps. Second point, to amend district policy two point five, point two point five and two point five, point two point six to clarify the criteria for supporting additional scale outside of nodes and corridors, for example, approximate heights that would be considered in introducing language around site size and context, allowing for appropriate transition and update the map to reflect these policies. Number three, to amend the district plans to include reference on the maps to indicate the areas outside of the nodes and corridors, which additional development opportunities would apply considering policies two five, two five and two five, two six of the district policy. Next bullet point, to provide clarifying wording to describe the implementation relationship between the district plans and area structure plans. Next, to expand opportunities for high and tall high-rise buildings in the downtown and we, we can to in neighborhoods and in other appropriate areas in center city. And to refine the district plans to display the development and employment horizons at the two million population horizon.
Okay, second by Counselor Stevenson. Can you make the introduction, please, Counselor Nak?
Sure, this may look very familiar if you remember the district planning discussion, because this is the, a, a very similar motion to the referral motion that I was originally going to make, the council had voted on. The final three points are, thanks to Counselor Stevenson, who, who helped work on this when we were going through that, so that's just one piece. I think really, I, I don't want to repeat most of what I said at the public hearing, other than I do think it's important that our maps and contained within these district plans better reflect the reality of what we're going to be approving. For, you know, many of the same reasons that, that I've said before, which is that I, I think while many of us and, and many people who are regularly invested in this work each and every day will happily read through the text and go through all the ins and outs. I'd love to believe that that's going to be the case for everyone, but I don't think that will be the case. I think the vast majority of people are going to open up the district plan and look at the map. And they're going to look at the map and see what is allowed to be built nearby. And, and what is that, how does that work? So this is really the idea. Appreciate that this will still be potential amendments, so council would have an appropriate time to, to maybe make a different change, but I, I think we need to make sure those district plans accurately reflect what I think we are already starting to approve, including at the most recent public hearing, which is, I think, one property half a block off Secondary Corridor, which in the map, I don't think it was fully captured. So again, all of which should be said, I just really like to make sure that the public can see exactly what the words say in the maps as we go forward on that. So there we go.
Thank you very much. Questions? Go to Counselor Rutherford.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things. I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the use of engagement in here, being that we just passed the district policy, being that everything that you're mentioning in this to the mover, everything that you're mentioning in your motion is really to update the visuals, ideally to reflect what we've already approved. So I'm confused as to what your expectation or hope is in terms of an outcome, outcome with engagement, other than reopening the debate about district plans.
Yeah, great question. I mean, I'll actually maybe ask you to ask him then, because I, I'm actually okay with just the work being done without a lot of engagement on that, because again, I think it is very much a maps exercise. I think this is the wording that was suggested, but I'm, but I would be comfortable with what you've just suggested of saying, get the work done without having to go out and do a lot of separate conversations.
Well, and it would have to come back to a public hearing.
Exactly, yeah.
So there would be still, it's not like the public would have no opportunity to engage or provide their feedback on those amendments. I guess, so same question to administration. If you were the ones that recommended this wording, I'm, I'm kind of a little bit uncomfortable with the conducting engagement and what actual level of influence based on the work outline would actually be achievable.
Yes, I guess the one point of clarification that admin would like to seek, if that was, if the engagement piece was to be removed, was the first bullet in terms of refining the location and maximum width of nodes and corridors. What information are we using or criteria are we using to reflect that expansion or contraction of corridors and nodes, and what, whether that's technical information, what is perceived to have been missed and what role the public may have in that, and how you would like us to check, check in with Edmontonians on that discussion?
Okay, with that in mind, I wonder if it's better to just, and maybe to the mover, if this is considered a friendly amendment, because I, I can see where you're going with that one. That it would be amended friendly, I hoping, I'm hoping it's friendly, that administration prepare potential amendments to, and then listing all of those, and then specifically in the bullet one that talks about refine, that say, and conduct engagement to refine the location. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's only that one bullet that we're engaging on.
Sounds very friendly to me, but I'll see if the Assembly agrees.
Okay, move up the, is, is the, is the complete, is in the chat, okay, got it, okay. Any further questions, Counselor Rutherford?
Yeah, so I did have a further question to the mover as well, because I, I am a little bit nervous about the unintended consequences of the map and some of the things that you're asking for in this, this motion for amendments. In that it will show very much a panacea of the city ultimately being covered in something. If you overlay the district policy items, if you do a gradient, and again, how do you do the gradient without having some sort of line? So just wondering, you know, like, given those concerns, what are your thoughts on that to the mover?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, and, and I, you know, I, I can see it sort of both ways on this. I think I, I err on the side of a little more caution of the, or an overabundance of sharing of information versus not, not sharing as much, because, you know, I, I do think back to, you know, we don't have area redevelopment plans anymore, as they've been repealed or in most cases. But those did provide, I think, a little more clarity and certainty around where people could expect change to happen. Again, I, you know, it's going to take time. At the same time, with as fast as we're growing, I'm a little worried that if we don't list it, there's going to be a lot of people caught off guard saying, well, it wasn't in the map, how was I supposed to know? So I, I hear your concern. I just, I, I feel like I'd rather have more information on those than, than less and, and provide a bit more of a clear expectation as to what's going to happen and where, and, and we, we don't control so much the when, but, but at least the where.
Okay, I'll probably have a second round of questions and maybe another likely not friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Rutherford. Do we know the, what the project, uh, return date be?
We'd have to scope that out, Mayor. There's a significant body of work potentially here as we look to navigate what this motion means, given, you know, there's areas that we are not sure in terms of the clarity we need to do and, and the impacts it might have in terms of engagement. I would just also note as well that, you know, this is unplanned work in terms of the department's priorities. And so this would be requiring us to also take this back in terms of how do we balance the resources to do this work while undertaking other priorities related to our downtown and our industrial investment action work.
So would this get re-prioritized then, or would, would this, because industrial work is absolutely at the top, from my perspective. I think council has given direction to you that that is number one thing that you want you to focus on.
Absolutely.
Right? And the second one was downtown, right? That's kind of overall downtown revitalization, that's important to, so just how will this bump that work?
Well, this is a motion directing work, so we'd have to look at how we navigate that. If what I'm hearing is it's not as much of a priority as that other, those other bodies of work, then I can't speak to what that timeline would be yet in terms of returning this work. I would suggest, in terms of our best recommendation here today, would be to see how district plans function, how it's working for the community, how it's providing clarity to council. You know, we've had some recent public hearings where the district plans have been effective in terms of providing that direction for council and, and community. So we would, we'd have to look at what this means in terms of, of the work. What I could suggest is that, you know, as we see the outlook of a one point five million population horizon, how we might want to incorporate some changes in terms of thinking about what, how we might need to expand our corridors to accommodate additional growth.
So probably this, so this work probably be taken couple of years?
I don't know that it would take a couple of years, but I'm just mindful of balancing the resources and, and the engagement that we need to do. I can understand the mover's desire to provide clarity for Edmontonians in terms of how to interpret it plans, and, and if we can provide some supporting material, like an accompanying document of how to interpret, how to interpret a district plan. That's a, a piece of work that we had heard from the public hearing that we committed to doing.
But you're not, maybe in a more simple way, you're going to come back opening up the district plans next year?
Potentially, that's.
Potentially.
Well, the, the motion is directing us to go amend fourteen, is it fourteen district plans? I know we're, yeah, fourteen district plans, because one of the plans has not been approved.
Yeah, one is not approved, but.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at, you know, the, we'd have to scope the body of work, but potentially this requires an amendment to all of those bylaws that we would have to bring to it.
Opens up the entire plan again, right?
Yes.
So that opens up the entire people, um, opportunity for people to come and engage. That's another
Yes.
three or four day long public hearing possibly.
Potentially. Well, that's what we experienced when we brought forward the district plans. What that looks like next time, I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, right, right, okay. But I don't know what the timelines on, in constant act's minds is on this, but I rather see this work. I, I want you to focus on industrial growth. I want you to focus on downtown revitalization. I know what other plan you have. From my perspective, this probably be third or fourth priority. Right, so probably twenty twenty six, sometime coming back, twenty twenty, mid twenty twenty six, right? So that'll be my kind of timeline for it to come back, right? So, yeah, okay. I will take the chair back and go to Counselor Wright.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you very much. I guess to the mover then, what was your anticipated timeline on this?
Uh, on the maps, whenever you can change the map. I mean, I, and I don't, I don't mean to sound oversimplifying, but I mean, part of this motion is the maps, like literally just changing the maps to more accurately reflect these. So that, that to me is not a time.
Let me ask this procedure then, if you're just focusing on maps, do changing the maps needs to come back to council?
Yes, because they're maps as part of a statutory public.
Okay, got it, got it.
And, and so I would envision that first bullet point does, would take more time, because I actually do envision that. because I actually do envision that, you know, and I've, I've used this example numerous times in using it one more. 156th Street, which has the Valley Line West LRT, as identified here, is focused more on a one lot deep corridor. It should be at least a block, as an example. We're investing two and, two and a half billion dollars in an LRT. That's a place where we probably should expand that corridor, but that will take a bit of work. And so I'm okay with however long it takes the team to do that. I think the map work is, I would have a very, like, I don't foresee that being a massively challenging exercise in terms of timelines to update a map.
And does administration see that as being a massively amount of time to update?
It is a, it is a body of work and it is labor intensive, because what we're looking at is a piece of policy 2526 in particular that has a number of conditions. So we have to look at all of those conditions and identify which parcels that, that applies to. And then as amendments zoning comes forward to council at public hearing, that, those conditions change. So there is a snowball effect. So we will be seeing, and council will be seeing increased amount of anticipated amendments to district plans than, than the philosophy or the guiding principles of the project started out with. We came to this project with a priority of streamlining our planning processes and tools. And we will be, with this motion and, and these maps being embedded within the statutory plan, more amendments will be required to reflect that snowballing effect of opportunity. And that is not, amendments in themselves aren't bad, but it just, it's a demonstration of the lack of flexibility and the prescriptive nature that they are then trending towards.
If we have too many specially designated
Yeah.
zones or areas, then, okay.
Yeah.
And 2526, that is, that included the corner lots with?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And, and just, just on that, and I don't think it took into account and any sort of the naturalized areas around it? Like, it, it only took into account, it was corner and on a?
And adjacent to a park site, so not natural, are not our natural areas. And the district plans do not introduce any new development opportunities in our River Valley and Ravine system.
Okay, even if it is across from a?
A corridor or no, we have our city policies in place, and as well as our, the, the policy tables in each of the district plans that touch the River Valley or Ravine systems defer to the River Valley ARP. So there is no, there are no new development opportunities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Can you move the second round, please?
Uh, moved second round?
Second. Please vote.
I'm yes.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Counselor Paquette, I believe Counselor Paquette has stepped out for a moment with notice. We're just waiting for one more vote. We have all the votes?
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Counselor Rutherford?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sohie. I would like to move an amendment to strike point two and point three. So just to reflect that those are, to be clear, to strike the amending of district policy 252.5 and 2.2.6 to clarify the criteria for additional scale and to amend the district plans to include the reference of the maps. Yep, I'm going to move that amendment to strike those two from the motion.
Second?
Okay, so that is a bullet.
Just to strike three, two or three?
Strike two and, because there's no numbers here, so I don't, oh, at the top, right?
It's, yeah, it's not, it's the, it's the dots.
I see, that's the amend district policy 2525.
And then to amend the district plans to include a reference.
Okay, good, good, good. All right, so we have amendment on the floor. Anyone to speak, sorry, questions on the amendment?
Sorry, can I introduce it?
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, I understand the intent of the mover. I think that the body of work for these two amendments is significant. And I think that, as was mentioned just recently by our administration, we should see how these play out. Administration was very intentional in their use of wording around policy 2525 and 2526 to not be super prescriptive, so that councilors could take into account context. So I feel like with that point, if we approve that today, we are locking ourselves into an even more rigid ability to, to not take into account context. And again, I think that the, the one thing about the gradients with nodes and corridors, sure, but to amend to include references to every location in a map that would include 2.5, 0.2.5 and, and 2.2.2.6 of the district policy is a really significant body of work. And as we heard, you know, there's a lot of other council priorities. So that's the intention behind my, my move to, to strike those two.
Okay. All right, any questions on the amendment? Okay. Okay, now to speak to the amendment, Counselor Nack.
Yeah, thanks. So, so the, the core thesis statement here is that accuracy matters for the public who doesn't follow the day-to-day work that we do. And I'm actually just going to ask you to rewind to yesterday. So yesterday, we approved a rezoning application in Alberta Avenue, which was half a block off the secondary corridor and not captured in the map, which means any resident in that neighborhood who is reading the text, or rather, who is reading the map, does not know that the site that we just rezoned would have been an area that was captured. And so that's what I'm worried about, is that, and I appreciate that, yes, that will take some time to, to draw that up. But I think the residents need that level of certainties to understand where change can happen. And I, there's going to be nuance to that, I understand. And there will need to be times where we deviate from that, but I'd rather have a little bit more information for them to understand what the direction is, what, what we've actually just approved, the words that, that we've now approved, that this council has wholly endorsed, and that that is reflected in what I think they're going to grab on a day-to-day basis. That's where this sort of comes from. This is, that, that was just one example of what will be many, 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 many more to come over the years, where there's a locate, again, I use the example, and I'm going to use it one more time. If tomorrow there was an application half a block off 156th Street, everything we've said in the words would say, absolutely approve that for higher density. And we should. But there's no visual indication of that. You have to go down and dig into the text. We would all do that. Our city staff would all do that. The, the civic nerds will do that. That's not what I think a lot of the, the day-to-day folks who are busy with life will do. And I just really worry if that we don't have some clear visuals for them to understand where change can occur. It's going to set up a lot of very challenging conversations for folks who feel like they're, they're not understanding what we've just done. So that's where this comes from. That's why, so I, I hear, I hear the concern and, and I greatly appreciate it. I just, I would rather us take a little bit of that time to do that work, so that we're being more accurate with, with the folks who we represent, so that they know what to expect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nack. Anyone else to speak before I go to Counselor Wright? Go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks. I was asking to get, oh, there I am. Okay. And I'm, I'm supportive of Counselor Nack not being in support of this change. Yeah, I think a pitcher's worth a thousand words, or probably in this case, about 2,000 words in text. So I do think it is important that it reflects. Now, I, not necessarily a priority either, but if it can be updated to, to reflect the, the proper text, I, I think many Edmontonians would appreciate that.
Great. Counselor Salvador?
Yeah, just very briefly. So really, really see where, where Counselor Nack is coming from this, on this one. And, you know, generally supportive of the overall intent, what, what I'm struggling with from my, from my read, because I was actually thinking the Alberta Ave example as well. Bullet point one, for me, is the most important one around ensuring that, that gradient effect, which I think is reflective of the text of the district general policy is reflected in the visuals. And I think that point two and three are actually captured by that. If we're able to show that there's an expectation of that, that gradient and sort of step-down effect coming off of nodes and corridors, I think that does provide the clarity that, that is being asked for in bullet point two and three. So I, yeah, I'm, I'm going back and forth on this one, but I think I am comfortable with the amendments, but, but would lean back to bullet point one as, as being critically important for me in providing that clarity and transparency around where folks can expect to see development. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Salvador. Counselor Rutherford to close?
Yeah, thank you. I've taken some notes with my colleagues' comments. And I think, you know, absolutely agree with Counselor Nack that accuracy matters. And one thing that I know that we have, have studiously agreed on is the need for public trust. However, I actually think that accuracy can come with a double-edged sword, and that we could actually be creating more distrust when we at times deviate from what is in the map than if we have the more fluidity as is currently stated in that, in those policy directions. I'm more concerned about the prescriptive nature of bullet two in terms of prescribing heights and clarity around heights and taking away that ability for nuance and context. I also think about back at public hearing just this week, since it's so fresh in our mind, and the Victoria Promenade, and how confused residents were that came and spoke in opposition to that development, because they saw a map that showed a much broader area of the DC1, including the Victoria Promenade being included in that, and it caused a lot of misunderstanding and concern. And so sometimes maps can add clarity absolutely, but sometimes the old adage, less is more, is actually, is actually okay. Again, I also want to reiterate that what my colleague Counselor Salvador said, you know, there is a compromise here. I wasn't so keen when it was first mentioned about the, the gradients in the maps. I didn't move, delete that one, because I understand that that creates that middle ground and that compromise. But all of those four, those three bullets in totality together as part of this motion is too much of a significant body of work, creates too much rigidity, rigidity, and allows for, in my opinion, an erosion of public trust if and when any council deviates from that. I, what am I going to say? Just want to make sure I missed, I didn't miss any of my points. Yeah. So I also want to say just finally, lastly, the last point I had on here was just a reminder that this is iterative in nature. And just like the zoning bylaw renewal, we expect this work to be perfectly imperfect, and we expect to be responsive to a problem. But I would rather wait and see if we have the problem before asking administration to do a bunch of work than asking them to do that work in anticipation of a problem that may or may not come to fruition. So I think it's, it's a good conversation to circle back to as we have implemented the district plans and seen if there is confusion and things that come forward and that tension does materialize. But I would much rather wait and see before that, that significant investment of administrative resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rutherford. So to vote? Counselor Wright, you were to speak, but it's been?
No, I think I've just got.
Yeah, because Counselor Rutherford has closed. Okay, so please vote.
Counselor Paquette, are you with us?
I'm with you. Just took a minute for it to come through.
Nope, that's awesome. Thanks. I wasn't sure if you'd come back yet. We're just waiting for one more vote.
Uh, no from me.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. Okay, it is defeated. Okay. I just want to ask, Counselor Nack, would due date second quarter 2026 be friendly? If not, I'll, will be friendly? Okay. Will that work for admin? Or you want third quarter 2026?
Third quarter of 2026. And if we can bring it sooner, then we absolutely would. But yeah, it'd be important for us to scope out this work.
Okay, third quarter. Maybe I'll give the chair to Counselor Wright, because I, what I, the reason I'm asking is this, that I don't want other work to be de-prioritized, is the right word, or re-prioritized, right? De-prioritized. I don't want to come, fall down to the list because of this work. Can, would that third quarter 2026?
That is, that is helpful in terms of providing more time to be able to scope out the body of work, understand the staging and phasing of how we need to make these changes, and then bringing forward the 14 bylaws to a public hearing, mindful of what engagement might look like as well, recognizing engagement's been taken out, I think. Is that just on, on one of the parts? So, yeah, we can take that away.
Good. All right, good. There is it then. Okay, Counselor Nack to close?
Right, point of order.
Oh, sorry, Counselor, Counselor Rutherford, sorry.
That's okay. I, I would like to speak to the totality of them.
Oh, yes, of course, of course. Got it.
Sorry.
Okay, any, Counselor Paquette, questions? No questions?
No question. I was, I was just on the board to speak, but I'll hear what Counselor Rutherford says first. It might change my opinion.
Okay, now we are speaking to the entire motion. Counselor Rutherford, go ahead, please. Counselor Rutherford, go ahead.
Sorry, I was not off mute. I said, I, again, appreciate the intent of this motion, and I understand, you know, my colleague saying, okay, well, if we pass this motion for this body of work, don't let it de-prioritize other work. But I think it's really important context to remember that two things. One, this is a body of work and a significant one at that, especially with the amendment not passing. And so whether it's done in Q3 or Q1, other work that was planned to be happening as a result of implementing city plan, and quite frankly, moving district plans forward, like our heritage plans and other things, are, are going to be delayed. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. Is this the priority of this council in terms of where we want our administrative, our limited administrative resources to spend their time and energy right now? So, so that, that is the, the first and foremost. Second, I do want to reiterate that this will come back to a public hearing, and this does open up, especially with the district policy, the re-debate on the entirety of the district plans. I'm very supportive of certain points, like the increased densification in the downtown district and other things that I see in here. Again, I said it, it was a compromise to me for the, the gradient, but I, I can't support this in its totality, because to me, I would much rather see other city plan work be advancing. And as I mentioned before, if there are issues and misunderstandings, we can address those as those emerge. Very, very concerned about the totality of this work, whether it's in Q3 or not, and the reopening and debate on the or not, and the reopening and debate on the district policy as a as a totality so soon after we've passed this. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Rutherford. Consul Stevenson?
Yes, thank you. I I actually misvoted on the last vote, but it wouldn't have changed the outcome. So I'm happy to to let it ride as is. I, you know, I really appreciate this conversation about resources and um and and how we best spend those. I think the the timelines that are provided um really help to mitigate those risks. Uh, where I'm, where I do think there is significant value is in that communication uh with with Edmontonians. Um, most of us are very visual, having quick access to a map and an understanding of what that map means, I think, is goes a really long way to help those communication efforts. Um. I also just wanted to uh, you know, speak a bit to some of the the final bullets, which are important in in the area that I represent. It's really just ensuring that we can have uh consistency in terms of where where we are uh supporting different development types, um just following the logic of where highest and highest density makes makes sense in our community. So thank you to the mover for bringing it forward and uh appreciating this work going forward. I think as the overall iterative process, um and I hope that when the this work comes back, that it's it's complemented by other nuances and refinements, they're informed by the application of the district plans over the next year and a bit. So thanks again.
Thank you, Consul Stevenson. Consul Piquet?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Ms. Fair. Um, I'm going to support this uh simply because it falls in line with exactly the things that we were discussing in district planning, uh conversations about what was needed. And uh at that time, administration did clarify that they could add some supporting documents and things like that online. Um, but uh I do see also the sense of just throwing it in there. This is not new work. This is uh iterative work of things that uh administration said they were going to do anyway. And uh if it's adding clarity and reducing some of the debates and and stress that people are gonna have, I think that's all for the better. Um, as for timelines, I mean, it's a few maps. I don't know. Uh, to me, it seems like it's not that big a deal, but maybe I'm wrong. And uh as for the length of time it takes, uh it won't be, I mean, look, uh there's, I don't think anyone wants to subvert or push any other important work to the side, and I don't think that's what's going to happen. Uh, that would be kind of a poor uh management of of priorities. Uh, I, so I trust administration to get their workflow right on this and you know, I also don't think that this reopens any debates. Uh, the planning is passed. This is just, you know, let's let's throw a few maps and clar- and clarifications onto it uh for the good of public. And uh because of those reasons, I don't see a big problem uh with supporting this, so I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Consul Wright, can you take the chair, please?
I have the chair.
I'm not excited about this, but I will support it because if more clarity can be brought, that's fine. I also want to make sure that the the reason I moved the date to third quarter twenty twenty six, because I do not want any work that is prioritized to be deprioritized. So from my perspective, even if it takes longer than third quarter of twenty twenty six, it gets into twenty twenty seven, I will be fine with that. I just want to make sure from my, if I'm back here, right, if, right, so I will be fine with that. But I I want to support this because because clarity will be good, but not at the cost of in any way, shape or mind compromising other priorities. For me, industrial growth is number one. Downtown revitalization is there, right? This, I know what uh uh other work you're doing, that is priority, uh but this will be probably for me the last priority of all those things, right? So I want you to know that. So I wouldn't be too fast if you don't read the timelines on this here. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, uh with that, I'll take the chair back. And go to Consul Nak to close.
Uh, sure. Uh, uh, thanks, everyone, for the conversation. Uh, I actually do want to just stress uh two of the bullet points, that it's more than just the map piece. I mean, the map piece is really important to me. I think it's about clarity. It's about providing a bit more of a a better understanding of of what will happen. Um, but actually, if you if you look at that first point and and a little bit to um the fifth point, which Consul Stevenson already speak, spoke about, um, it is ideally actually also about expanding development opportunity beyond what these already show. Um, so the fifth bullet point is is about the the uh the downtown and Wauquintwin neighborhoods. And I think that's a very valid place where we might want to see greater uh heights and greater density. And in bullet point one, uh uh hit the rewind button, um but Valley Line West LRT route, I'm just gonna say it a million more times. Uh, that should be a route that is not one block wide from Stony Plain Road out to the very west end of the city. It should be at, sorry, one lot wide. It should be at least one block wide. Um, we should make that clear with the folks that live in those areas, which happen to include me. Um, like, we 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 need to see way more development along a two point seven billion dollar transit investment. Um, and so we actually need to do the work in point one to allow for that it in a way that um the community understands because we're gonna have rezoning applications that come forward that are gonna be recommended by administration and supported by this council and next council that don't currently show in in those diagrams. So let's just actually make it real clear and and set some expectations, in fact, that that's the type of development we're gonna expect along a mass transit line. So uh a- as well as other corridors across the city, but I'm picking on the west end because that's the area I know best. So that's just something else to consider in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please vote?
I live right by the library. Come find me there.
We're just waiting for, we have all the. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. Okay, that's carried.
Sorry, I voted wrong.
You want to reconsider or just want to record it as opposed?
Let's just recall, because it was right away. We'll just send the vote back.
Okay, recall, please.
Sorry, we're all tired.
No worries. You're very accommodating. Here you go. Recall now, please. Vote for recall. Oh, we.
Not reconsidering? It's it's if it's if it's right after, because somebody says, I just hit the wrong button, it's a recall, not a two step.
Let's re-vote, please. So we are, we are voting on the motion now.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Who else has subsequent?
Hello.
Constable Stevenson.
Hello.
Constable Pecat.
Hello.
Constable Tang.
Hello.
Constable Hamilton.
Hello.
Constable Rutherford.
Hello.
Constable Salvador.
Hello.
Constable Cartmel.
Hello.
Constable Rice.
Here.
And Constable Janz.
Hello.
Okay, who wants to go next for subsequent on district plans?
I think I signed up, mine's pretty easy.
Okay, Constable Rutherford, let's see how easy it is.
Okay, I think the clerk has the wording, but I'll just read it in. That administration prepare amendments to Charter by law two four zero zero eight Northwest District Plan and Charter by law two four zero zero seven Northeast District Plan aligned with the updated bike plan implementation guide for consideration by council at a future public hearing to change the active transportation network to reflect the infrastructure improvements on one hundred and thirty-two Avenue Northwest.
Second, second by Constable Nak, can you make the introduction, please?
Yeah, happy to. So just, you know, there's significant work and excitingly so on the one hundred and thirty-two Ave renewal. However, in the map six of the district plans, the active transportation to one point two five million, it actually doesn't have any of the one thirty-two Ave as any kind of active transportation network whatsoever. And, you know, to the point of what Councilor Nak was saying in the last motion, I think this is a big misstep in terms of public trust when we're building this kind of infrastructure that in these district maps does not show up. So that is what it is. And in conversations with the administration, they are already planning to do some bike plan implementation updates. So they would actually look at the network within these two districts related to these infrastructure upgrades and potentially even just shift around some of. So for example, on one thirty-seventh Avenue right now, it shows as a major active mode corridor, but maybe that will be shifted to one thirty-two Ave. So you don't need those two intense constructions or roads corridors as significant active mode. That's not saying they won't be able to have active mode, just not to the same level that we're seeing on one thirty-two Ave. So that's the intention of this. And with regards to a due date, I didn't, I didn't put a due date. I did say in the motion that it would be aligned with the work in the bike plan implementation guide, which I think again, maybe dependent on what just got passed and brought to a future public hearing.
Good. Thank you, Constable Rutherford. So again, going to administration on the timelines for coming back. Can this be aligned with last motion that was passed?
This one's slightly different. The bike plan implementation is being reviewed right now as an update, and we'd be looking to reflect that in the district plans. So we sort of have our sights set on maybe a Q three of twenty twenty-five, so next year to undertake that work.
Okay, I'll sign up to class questions, then I'll wait for that. Constable Pecat, I'll go to you next.
Yeah, thank you. Just administration, if this were to pass, because I don't have the map in front of me, I don't know specifically which corridors we're talking about. And that makes it hard for me to vote for this because I didn't see any supporting documents to, so I could get that clarification. Can you just clarify that?
Counselor, there's the work that's being done to update the bike plan implementation guide is citywide and reflecting the council's investment in bike routes in general. And so we're looking through this review, what's been built, what's been, what's planned and how, and the routes that have been assessed. And so the changes that we would bring forward as a result would reflect those that have been realized, like from concept of the bike plan to construction. And so this is work that we were intending to do and that we would probably bring forward with some other updates to the district plans. So we can work this into our existing work plan.
Is this new direction or is it something you were working on otherwise, just clarity from council?
Yeah, this is not new work. The review of the bike plan implementation, implementation guide is underway, and we were already anticipating that we would need to make changes to district plans as a result of this, just like the River Valley modernization work. There's work that's going on across the corporation. We would bring that back to council as a package.
Okay, so this is just to bring out clarity to the work you were already doing? Okay. Okay, so much like we had a motion yesterday that was similar, that it was just bringing added clarity to work that was already underway when it came to, well, I mean, that's yesterday's news, but okay, I got it. Yeah. And just to the mover, I guess, so that is the intent, just to add clarity?
The intent is for the district maps in the Northwest and the Northeast District to reflect the infrastructure investments that we've made on one thirty-two Avenue that currently do not show in any way on that act, those active corridor maps, that they in any way are any kind of active mode route.
Okay, yeah, okay. So to add clarity so people can see the work that's actually been done.
Trust, as we just discussed, because we have this infrastructure, then as soon as people look at those maps, they're gonna say, well, why? How can we trust these district plans if it doesn't even show these, this is an active mode corridor when we've built up bike lanes and all of these great infrastructure investments on one thirty-two Ave?
Yeah, okay, got it, you know, and I agree completely. This is a good motion, happy to support it.
Thank you.
I'm speaking to it, but I'll stop there, thanks.
Constable Rice?
Okay, thank you. So what's my understanding by reading this, by heard this, is just add the information on the map and to make sure the district plan and including map really match and reflect the infrastructure improvement on one, one hundred thirty-two Avenue. So there is no, no financial and budget implication and with this change as a result. Right? Can you confirm that?
Yes, that is correct.
So that means for the like active transportation network improvement, infrastructure improvement already happening right now, we just need the district map to reflect that work is happening.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so no financial implication?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all my question.
Okay, Constable Wright, can you take the chair, please?
I have the chair.
So the bike plan implementation guide, that work once updated doesn't come to council? That's more of internal, right?
Yes, that's correct.
But this motion is to, can the showing of the bike lanes of one thirty-second Avenue, it will appear on the, on the bike plan guide once it's updated? So can that be done without this coming back to council?
So what, we're drawing information from the bike plan implementation guide. So we're ground truthing what is happening with our bike plan construction and the district routes and reflecting that within district plans. So just like other work is happening across the corporation, sorry, I used River Valley modernization already, but as information is updated, district plans are intended to be, to be current and to be evergreen in some sense, and so we do anticipate.
So that's why it needs to come to council because the updates will also, update is not just on the guide, but also on the district plans, right?
Yes, the guide won't be coming back, just district plans.
So that's where my little bit of my concern is that third quarter twenty twenty-five, opening up conversation about bike lanes, right? And people see that as an opportunity to come and, you know, raise concerns, right? Because we're not changing the bike lane. This, this motion doesn't change, doesn't direct you to not do or do more, whatever. It's just update of the maps and reflect what is already there on the maps. But it does, because you're opening the bylaw, you opening the public hearing, and public hearing allows people to come and speak on what, on that matter. Doesn't matter whether you're building bike lane or not building bike lane. People, it will give the opportunity for people to say, okay, I want to express my views on bike lanes, not just remain focused on the map.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, speakers can come and speak to whatever they like for their five minutes. And so if they choose to speak about bike lanes in general, that would, that would be allowed.
Yeah, okay.
Open to direction, Mayor, on, on the third, or on the due date for this motion if later is.
Well, as long as, you know, when people see the bike plan implementation guide, they see one thirty-second Avenue on the map, that is clarity. Maybe we can update the Northwest District Plan in twenty twenty-six as we do when you come back with the Constable Nak's previous. So I would, I'm gonna change the due date to be third quarter twenty twenty-six to come back with the other, other board. Is that a friendly, Constable Rutherford? No, okay, well, I'm gonna amend it then.
I'm sorry.
I'm amending the due date to third quarter twenty twenty-six.
And that's not considered friendly, correct?
No, it's not considered friendly by the.
Any questions for the amendment?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Any questions? No? Do you want to close, Mayor Sohi?
No, I think Constable.
I signed up.
Oh, I don't see you on the screen, so, okay, go ahead, please.
I don't need to have questions, I just like to speak to it, so before the closer.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, so I don't consider this friendly because this, as the ward counselor for one of the districts that covers this area, I can tell you, and that active construction is happening, this is already causing issues in my area. And I would respectfully like to ask the assembly to, to understand that this isn't opening up a debate on bike lanes, but this is right now, the district plans consolidated existing stuff. The current bike plan didn't have one thirty-two Ave as a corridor that was listed as either a primary or secondary active mode corridor. And so I get people saying, how come you're building this kind of infrastructure when it's not even in the plan? How can we trust these plans going forward? So for me, there is a bigger sense of urgency around this minor amendment to truly reflect what we're seeing in this, this district as well before any other renewal projects start in other areas like one thirty-seventh. I would like that holistic purview done. So for me, that is why I'm considering this not friendly, and I would hope that my colleagues can at least understand that for the Northwest District, that this is something that I am seeing and the timelines being different is, is important to me.
Thank you. Did you want to close?
Yes, I do want to close. I absolutely understand with Constable Rutherford that clarity is important, and now clarity doesn't exist, clarity doesn't, isn't there. The infrastructure is being built and people look at the maps, they see where is this? Why it's not in the plan? Absolutely understand that. But I think that clarity will be provided when the bike lane, bike lane implementation guide is updated. That one hundred thirty-second Avenue as a bike route will show up on that map, right? I think that only thing I am concerned about is the added clarity that Constable Rutherford is seeking in, including that in the, in the, in the district plan, which is absolutely important. In my mind, it can wait another year. I don't want to have an opportunity, I always like opportunity to debate things, right? And I can defend bike lanes, I definitely will. But I think just a couple of months before the election, trying to further or an opportunity to further politicize a piece of infrastructure that is already politicized at a citywide raises concerns for me. That is why I'm requesting that clarity be provided in the implementation plan and further clarity be provided in the district plans in twenty twenty-six. And do not open this discussion of a citywide network that it has the potential to open and further politicize already politicized topic. That is my concern, that's why I'm changing the due date.
Thank you, please vote. Thank you. Please vote.
We have all the votes.
Play the, display the votes, please. And that is carried. We'll continue on now with the main motion, and I'll return the chair.
I got the chair, thank you. Okay, now we have a main motion on the floor. And to speak. Okay, councillor Rutherford to close?
Uh, nothing, nothing further.
Okay, please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Okay, any other subsequent? Consul, yes? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm just gonna read the wording I have. I, I believe it's the updated version. This is, uh, with regard to Garna within the Scone District Plan. And this is that administration prepared amendments to charter bylaw two four zero one zero Scone District Plan to designate a subarea to protect small-scale, ground-oriented, family-friendly residential in the areas currently zoned Small-Scale Residential Zone RS in North and South Garna, resulting in small-scale residential in approximately thirty-three percent of the Garna neighborhood, including the Heritage Area Zone DC One. And that it is brought forward with the University Garna Priority Growth Area rezoning with a direction to both protect small-scale, ground-oriented, family-friendly housing and improve heritage protections for consideration at a future public hearing. Uh, committee or council Q two twenty twenty-five. May I introduce?
Second.
So the council act seconded it and.
Yeah, so, um, this has come up a, a number of times in, in particular in the Garna community because Garna, uh, has right, I believe they are, they wrote to all of, all of you, uh, that, uh, Garna maybe, if it isn't already, it's on its way to be the second, uh, densest neighborhood in, uh, in, in the, in the core, in the, inside the Hyundai. The community has articulated that they have, uh, because of the proximity to the University of Alberta and the housing, the housing pressures that they feel right now with less than one percent vacancy with everything else, there's a, a they are worried, they're worried, my words, that there's gonna be kind of a land rush on Garna, especially in the, um, the Heritage Zone. And realistically, given the number of heritage homes in the kind of the central area between one oh nine and one twelve, given the challenges with doing development north of eighty-seventh Avenue, kind of if you can picture where the Sugar Bowl is, there's a couple of streets there that are effectively dead ends. And given the pressures around the, the, the area, um, they would like to see development concentrated in East Garna, so the area between one oh nine and one oh six, along one oh nine and along eighty-seventh Avenue as well. So this would have the benefit of still bringing in a lot of density, but still preserving some, a mix of other forms in the central core west part of Garna, if you can, if you can kind of visualize what I'm talking about here. So this, uh, the, the, the concern has been articulated that, um, if, if something like this is not provided, uh, that there is going to be more and more student dormitory style housing, there's gonna be more and more styled, uh, hide, higher density housing, there's gonna be less, uh, family-oriented or single-family or ground-oriented homes. And so what this amendment seeks to do is, is, uh, direct both the, the car, carve-out protections within the district planning, but also provide guidance to the upcoming priority growth area work too. Yeah, I, I think, I think I've blown past my introduction time. Happy to answer questions.
Sorry, uh, councillor.
Nobody, nobody called me.
Councillor Nat, I was distracted.
Oh, thank you.
Councillor Nat.
The clock's not running.
Thanks, Mayor Sohi. So, uh, can somebody have any, um, can remind me, maybe it's the movers, while the, the, the heritage area you're referring to right now, there is a, is there zoning for them right now, heritage zoning, that space?
Yes, that's correct.
But it doesn't, um, prescribe built forms. So I think what I'm hearing in this motion is the desire to sort of prescribe single-family versus the heritage zoning could allow for a greater development outside of single-family, but there are other things, not like the, maybe the Westmount Architectural Heritage Area or something like that.
Yes, correct. The DC One in Garna is from about the nineteen eighties. Um, it does allow for some multi fam, or multi-dwelling forms such as row housing, but it doesn't, for instance, allow for secondary suites. Um, and so our understanding of this motion is, uh, an expansion of that DC One uh, to areas that are now zoned, uh, RS to preserve that single family.
So to, to essentially further extend the existing DC One from, so that, uh, okay, okay. Um, maybe to the mover, I, you know, I, I know there's a lot of different tools, um, in different areas. Has there, has there been any conversation with the residents? Have they talked about the idea of, uh, you know, we, we've, we have caveats in other parts of the city where residents have essentially chosen to restrict their own property rights with that? And I'm curious if they've explored that option versus a council-directed motion, which, which essentially.
Thank you. I, it predates me. I don't know how long this, the Garna Heritage Area exists. I've, I believe, um.
I think they said nineteen eighties or something.
Okay, yeah.
So I guess I'm, I'm just curious if that, you know, if that is the desire amongst residents to sort of preserve a particular housing type. That feels the most, as, as we've learned in, in spots like Lenora, it's, it serves as the most sort of concrete way of doing that. Um, and I'm curious if they, if they, if you know if they've had any conversations about going down that path.
I am, I'm not aware on an individual level. I have heard, you know, the same thing you probably heard in Lenora that there's pros and cons of doing that as an individual owner in terms of restriction or the actual funding provided, but, um, uh, I believe that at the last PJ meeting, the city was providing information about how to do such, such a, uh, such a move.
Okay. And did you have anything to add from the, no, okay. So then maybe the other question is similarly, I mean, that, that's a private-to-private agreement. If they wanted to go down the caveat piece, I'm just, I'm just trying to explore all the available options because I, I hear it, and at the same time, I appreciate sort of the proximity, we, you know, this zone and where it is in relation to the University of Alberta and, and probably why in the plans we've identified it as, as more significant growth. Would, would they also have the opportunity? So if there were homeowners that were looking to to essentially extend that type of direct control zone to their properties, they could also choose to go through rezoning themselves. To sort of extend those rights if they wanted to go that, down that path? They could apply for rezoning for.
That's correct, yeah.
Now, the question that would likely arise is, would we support that as a city if they were to propose sort of extending a DC two, which I'm guessing, if we're being very frank, the plan says this. So we probably wouldn't necessarily support that. I know, I know it's hard to answer a hypothetical, but at the same time, I guess I, I'd want to be realistic.
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Pollack.
Uh, councillor, uh, so just in terms of how we would not support a proposed rezoning, obviously, we'd look at it individually, but the Garna node is one of the few major nodes identified within city plan that is, is looking to accommodate uh, increasing number of people, of businesses and employment. Uh, so there is uh, a lot of tension, I would say, around trying to restrict development in an area that naturally wants to, to have it. Um, and so through district plans, uh, we look to strike that balance as well as the further work through the priority growth area rezoning, which, uh, is challenging to, through this motion to try to direct a piece of work that hasn't had full debate or full eye, set of eyes on it through council or a public hearing with it. Uh, so there's a number of issues, uh, that administration has, uh, that can be seen through this motion.
Yeah, and so just looking at the map here, so you know, and, and again, I appreciate every area is a bit different, which is why, oh, I'm out of time. Okay, uh, then I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stevenson?
Yeah, thank you. Maybe I'll start with the heritage aspect. So when I'm looking at the, um, historic resources map that we have, I see in that area that there's only two, well, only one home that's, uh, uh, designated municipal historic resource. I think the school is maybe designated. And then there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven inventory of historic, uh, the homes that are on the inventory of historic resources. Um, so maybe again, back to some of the other tools, um, you know, any of those properties on the inventory are able to apply for full designation, which would provide the greatest, um, protection?
Yes, a designation of a historic resource under Historic Resource Act would provide protection from demolition or destruction of, of the single.
Okay, and do we, maybe to the mover, do we have any insight in terms of why, why homeowners in that area aren't choosing that tool?
Uh, just probably the same thing that we've heard elsewhere, that the restrictions it puts upon your individual property, the, um, the limited funding available and, uh, that doesn't, that doesn't provide the, your, it doesn't allow you to, to sort of still address the issue of what happens in the rest of the neighborhood. And I think, I think the fundamental question here that, that Garna has raised with all of us is, do we want neighborhoods to be single use or a single form? And if, and if we don't, if we want a mix of forms in, in all communities and, and a mix of all ages, wages and stages of life, um, should we not p, prescribe more controls that stop an area from becoming, uh, one, one typology?
Yeah, what I think, I, you know, I think the question of housing choice is a really important one. Uh, you know, my understanding is we did make some amendments recently around requiring ground-oriented ground floors, I suppose, of any scale of building that, that may go in this area. Is that, is that the case?
So through, uh, a passed motion, uh, the zoning bylaw has been directed to be amended to allow or to prescribe, uh, those ground floor oriented units on some of the larger buildings. Um, I would, I would note that families and family sizes come in all shapes and sizes as, as housing forms. Um, I think we can look to Quentwin, who, which has a large number of children and families within it and also a large diversity of, of housing that straddled different eras and generations, that this redevelopment all, isn't gonna happen at once.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a really important point, maybe just to dig into those statistics. So my recollection is that we Quentwin, even though the proportion of population of, of children is, is lower proportionally than the rest of the, uh, the city generally, that in absolute numbers, they have roughly equivalent number of children as, uh, Westmount as a neighborhood. Uh, I don't know if those are stats that you have at your fingertip, but, um, but we do, uh, you know, is it a fair assumption that higher density means you don't have families and children?
No, that's not a fair assumption. Like Travis said, um, families come in all shapes and sizes and different dwelling types appeal to different families and different households.
Great. Just in terms of the extension of the, the direct control, so sorry, was I understanding no secondary suites are permitted and no garage garden suites?
Correct.
That's, that's surprising to me, um. I, I don't know if it's fair to ask the mover, but do you have insights in terms of that, that is there a desire to amend the DC One or like as is extended further?
I believe the, the community has not expressed interest in, uh, amending the DC One. And I, um, I've heard from a, a few individuals who have properties there who do want to do changes, but I don't believe that would, I believe that would have to come as a single rezoning. I don't think that would change the DC One.
Okay, okay. Well, I will speak to this. Uh, appreciate the responses.
Councillor Salvador?
Yeah, thank you. Um, maybe I'll just go to administration first, um, and just kind of, I guess, more, more bluntly ask if administration is supportive of this motion?
No, we are not. And, um, I believe even just the, the thirty-three percent, uh, I'll ask Jesse to comment on that, but, um, it limits council's ability or it assumes a, a response to rezoning applications to maintain that and to operationalize that is really difficult.
But further, just to note, councillor Salvador, in the city plan, this area is identified as a major node. Uh, and one oh nine street is also a primary corridor. And so city plan sets direction in terms of the scope and scale and intensity of what to expect from development opportunities in the area.
And I would just add, um, just in terms of consistency of plans, our district plans need to be consistent with our MDP. And so if there was an inconsistency in there, that, that may necessitated amendment potentially to that higher level document.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point, because that was gonna be my second question. If this is essentially countered to what is in city plan, this is actually a much larger conversation and would necessitate city plan amendments, potentially.
Correct.
Yes, potentially. If there is an inconsistency, if you couldn't sort of, um, comply with both at the same time, if there was a true conflict, we would be in a position, um, where legally we would have to be amending both to, to make sure they spoke to each other.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarity, and that's, that's concerning. Um, I actually, I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but I wanna, I just wanted to get some thoughts. My recollection of the very old residential infill guidelines, which I know, like, we don't reference and are, and are outdated at this point. I remember there being language in there around like preserving a critical mass of single-family homes or like something to that effect. Am I completely off on that? Because this, to me, I, that's what jogged my memory a bit. Um, and I know we've distinctly moved away from that.
That is, or was, language, uh, within some of the residential info guidelines, uh, and that drove a lot of the policy and, or guidelines that were developed in two thousand six through two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Obviously, that policy has been superseded through the city plan and, and district plans that were just approved, um, which take a very different direction in terms of how the city wants to be built out, uh, in terms of that compact and dense form around our nodes and corridors network.
Okay, so there was sort of an intentional move away from that approach in, you said, two thousand nine?
Uh, so that's when the guidelines were, were in effect. The intentional move has, uh, been directed by city plan and district ones.
Great, thank you. Um, and then I just wanted to ask a question. I know like recognizing this is major node, primary corridor, right off one oh nine, I'm just thinking about uh, access to transit in this type of location, like I imagine compared to all other areas of our city, the potential for mode shift, um, in this particular node and corridor is high. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, that's fair.
Yeah, okay, um. Okay, and yeah, just thinking obviously of our climate goals and our mode shift goals, I think this particular community has some of the highest potential citywide, so having more folks living there, I'm starting to speak to it. I will stop and come back when it's time.
Thank you. Councillor Wright? Can you take the chair?
Yep, got it.
So just one, sorry, I was distracted for, for a bit, right? And, uh, uh, this question might have been asked. The, does the current currently in, in Garna under RS, there are single, there are RS zone and houses there, right?
Yes, that's correct. Um, clerks, if you could pull up the presentation, just go to slide thirty-seven, that illustrates where the RS, there are RS pockets within Garna.
So, so under the new plan, would you restrict that if somebody has a single-family home, they want to demolish their single-family home? Now, under the new plan, they would not be able to build a single-family home?
With this proposed motion, uh, it does allow for, uh, RS-type development, so ground-oriented, um, multifamily, uh, say in the form of row housing. Um, but beyond that, it would be restricted.
So, front-oriented?
Are, are you wondering what the development rates are today?
Yeah, what are the development rates are today? Can somebody, if somebody lives in a single-family home now, they want to demolish, want to build another duplex or single-family home, under the new plan, they will, they'll be able, they're not stricter from doing that, but they could also build higher.
The, on the areas identified here in yellow, in any case are zoned RS, so the development opportunities in RS are single detached residential, row housing, secondary suites up to.
Row housing, secondary suites up to multi-unit. So if you have a house there now.
Yeah.
And something happened and you wanted to build another house, you could.
Okay, so I mean, so just maybe to uh, Constable Janz. Some just explain me, wh- why would, what is the concern that you're trying to resolve if somebody can build? A single family home. Under the new plan, what, what is the, what is the concern?
So the concern uh raised and, and they. I think primarily comes down to a, uh, because of the proximity to the university, there's huge demand for student housing.
Yeah.
And many, uh, many of the neighbors have articulated that if a home goes down, it will be rebuilt as. Uh, more of a, a student dormitory or, or multi.
So the market is dictating a different product, even though you can build a single family home or duplex or fourplex?
Which, which could, which could mean that all of the existing single family homes could, or a number of them could be then, uh. Like the ideas, the idea is to, to have a mix of people, typology, everything in Garnow and not. Have it as kind of a, a student dormitory neighborhood, if that makes sense.
Okay, but the single family ground only oriented is not prohibited, is not restricted, right? Like, un- and under any plan, it's not restricted.
The, the other tension here is that the city is currently um having engagement around our priority growth area rezoning. So this area is part of that. Um, so there are areas identified in yellow here that are being contemplated to be rezoned as part of that project.
Okay, great. Thank you. Take the chair back?
Chair returned.
Okay, so that concludes the questions on this. Anyone to speak? Yeah. Constable Nak?
Sure. No, I, I, you know, I, I very, I appreciate why the movers bringing this forward on behalf of the community. Because I, I think there is, there is a tension that without any changes. Or if nothing, you know, from what our plans are that were approved, as, as I think we've heard a little bit in discussion. That maybe over time, in the next few decades, there's a possibility that Garnow could run into a situation where they don't have any single family homes at all. Potentially. That's a, you know, I appreciate, that's a pretty big s- stretch to say for certain, but you know, it's already an area that has a lot of higher density development. And they don't have a large uh existing supply of single family homes. There's sort of three pockets that we're looking at right now. One of which is, uh, has some additional protections of a, of a direct control zone, but still allows some uh. Um, higher scale development up to four units. And so there is a, there is a question that I think we would ask about. Should every community absolutely have single family homes in every single area? Or is there, are there unique circumstances we would need to consider and, and recognizing we don't control the market? Uh, because there could be, I think there are new homes, new single family homes in that area that likely wouldn't be taken down for at least another. Forty or fifty or sixty years. So, um, so I see why, why the, the motion would come forward. I, I'm not sure this is the, the right way in trying to tackle this. I, I, it's part of going back to some of the questions I asked earlier. I think for those areas, if we're looking for a separate conversation, I, I'm always hesitant as a council to. To extend a change like this that is restrictive of one's property rights. Um, I would ra- much rather, if that was the intent and the goal of, of some of the residents there. Uh, and, and not questioning the, the rationale as to why, I understand why they might be interested in that. To actually go down the path of what you see in a spot like Lenora or a handful of other communities where there are, you know. Caveats on their properties that set out what can happen. Because if, if we're essentially looking to extend. Uh, uh, what, what I would consider in a way, a bit of a restriction on the development rights. I'm not sure council's the right body to do that. I think that needs to be an individual and a community-based decision. Uh, and, and if folks are willing to accept that, then that would be the right path forward. So. Um, for me, I, I, again, thank you to the mover for, for bringing this forward. I understand why the community would have asked, requested this to come forward as well. Um, but I, I don't feel comfortable supporting this. As I think there are better ways for individual property owners to go about uh addressing those needs uh in that neighborhood. So, uh, I, I don't see myself supporting this, but interested in hearing my colleagues.
Constable Salvador?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, I also appreciate the mover bringing this forward. And I can, I generally understand the intention behind it. Uh, I, I won't be able to support it for a number of reasons. When I think about, you know, this particular area of our city, I think about. How it is, from my perspective, one of the most walkable, transit-oriented, amenity-rich areas. That has the highest potential for being um exemplary when we're talking about fifteen-minute communities. When we're talking about trying to achieve our goals uh related to mode shift, to create climate resilient communities where people have um a variety of options to get around. And I'm also deeply worried that this motion is counter to city plan. You know, hearing those answers from administration that this would be um in indirect conflict with what is outlined in the city plan and what is expected. In a major node and along primary corridors, um, that's, that's concerning to me. I think one of the things I was reflecting on in, in the city plan is uh the language that we use. When we say Edmonton is a community of communities. And I think that each, each one of those communities and each one of those districts. Um, to some degree is distinct and, and it's in my mind, okay, uh, to see that natural evolution. If this is an area where we want more people living and working and spending time. Um, and where we have a higher percentage of, of students, obviously, living to um, to go to university. That's okay. And I think housing will evolve and change to meet that demand and meet those needs. Um, I also appreciated the answers uh around how we've moved away from this type of prescriptive approach. Um, we've distinctly moved away from requiring, you know, a certain percentage or, or critical mass, if you will, of single family homes. In each community, um, for, for a variety of reasons, when we transitioned over to city plan. I think there's equity concerns uh that are embedded in that as well. So, yeah, for, for all those reasons, I will be unable to support this, uh, but appreciate the conversation today. Thanks.
Thank you, Constable Stevenson?
Thank you. I also will not be supporting this motion. I do appreciate the mover bringing it forward. Uh, I think it's always worth having these conversations. And I know that this was the will of his constituents. So, you know, appreciate, appreciate that work. Um, you know, I also really understand the concern and fear of change that individuals in the area may be feeling. Uh, when we love uh those, those areas in the communities that we call home, change can feel. Uh, very, very threatening in that way. Uh, as my colleagues have pointed out, this is a really. Uh, well-connected, amenity-rich area uh that aligns very clearly with the intent and outcome. Or the intent of both city plan and the district plans, um, in terms of where we want to see growth and change. Um, and it's consistent with all of the logic that we have in terms of how we want to build as a, as a community, um, in a sustainable way for the future. And I think when we look at it that way, this change i- can be really exciting. Uh, I think it will see a different, potentially a different type of neighborhood. Um. But that there will still be those elements that the, the community really values. So we have requirements for ground oriented. Um, bases of, of buildings, we have incentives for larger units. Um, and I think this will continue to provide space for a variety of households, like we seen with Quintwin. Um, which, as I mentioned earlier, has very few three-bedroom units, but, but quite a few kids. Um, and was recently uh identified as one of the top three most livable neighborhoods in all of Canada. You know, an important part of that livability is affordability. You know, I think that if we were restricting the built form in this area. What we would see is um exceptionally high housing costs in the area. I don't think that serves. Uh, families or, or any Edmontonians well in terms of um increasing those costs of living in a place that, that has access to public transit and other amenities. Um, and, and there are other tools that do exist if there is will from the community. Um, you know, if there's that, that strong commitment to the built form that exists now. I, I wanted to clarify, correct for the record, I, I was too zoomed in. There are, what, for my count, about seventeen properties. On the inventory of historic resources. So again, that, that option, that pathway to um becoming. Uh, a designated property uh exists to those properties. I'm going to encourage them to, to pursue that. You know, I think learning a little bit more about the DC and, and again, needing to know more. Um, you know, I'm very surprised at how limiting it is. It's, it's really unfortunate to hear of how. You know, often what we hear as sort of the most gentle and, and uh form of density in the form of suites. Other housing options is currently not permitted is, is concerning to me. And I hope it's something that will be looked at closely as part of the party growth area work that's underway. Um, so again, we'll not be supporting it, but appreciate the mover bringing it forward.
Thank you, Constable Stevenson. Constable Janz to close.
Thank you. Yeah, I, um. I think the, this, this debate will continue because like the other neighborhoods in the PGA conversations. There's a, you know, a very acute concern in particular from Garnow, given the, the, the. Development pressures around the university and the, the low vacancy rate. In some of the other neighborhoods in Ward-Pope's Dale, there might be one or two uh. New infills going in, maybe three, two, two, three, four a season, a smaller number, but. Um, there's a lot of Garnow right now that is, that is under construction, that is building. And, and for the most part, the community is in favor of that. And, and generally supportive of, of uh, uh, the, the densification that's coming. But I think there's a, there's a concern. There's a, a idea of, we have a wonderful school in Garnow, we have some childcare facilities. We have other amenities that do require a critical mass of uh young families to keep those institutions viable. And if, if a, um, if there are not some restrictions on form. If it is, if it is less left to uh, uh, market pressures, that there could, there could be a. Uh, an elimination of, of uh other options or what, what has, what they've coined family possible homes. That at, at some point, it'll, Garnow will be a great place to live until you, you, you know, your kids reach a certain age and you grow out of what's, what's available there. And, and that's uh, that's a concern that um has been, has been raised. And uh, do we? As we go through, yes, we're, we're kind of moving away from like a block, from a neighborhood, from a community to more of a district. Mindset that, you know, we will have different ages, wages and stages of life in different areas. But the, the articulation here has been a desire to um. Try and ensure that, that from the, from the district planning, from the legislative, that this is, this is preserved. So I expect that uh we'll be hearing more about this in the um. In the PGA conversation as well, because some of the, some of the areas that, that, that I've cited today, that I brought forward today. Are in that PGA conversation. And I, I have shared with administration, I'm not sure of the. Uh, of the viability of, of a, of development potential there. Um, and if those, if those, if those, some of those blocks would even be uh, uh, potential site that could be considered due to. Due to roadways, et cetera. Like, just, just because we, we approve a certain upzoning for Garnow doesn't, or for any area, it doesn't mean that a project will necessarily be. Be viable there. Um. Yeah, I, yeah, so it's, it's about having choices. At the, at the, in conclusion, it's about having choices and, and uh. Making sure that, you know, we don't um end up with just a, a uh apartments in one section. And then uh sort of student dormitories or, or major mansions in another. Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is defeated.
And, you know, not to rub salt in the wound, but I, if we can redo that vote, please.
Okay, we're still in time, so let's redo the vote.
Can you just tell me why?
Oh, yes, uh, Constable Cassari, why?
Uh, it's, it's incorrect.
You voted the wrong way.
We'll recall.
Okay, recall the vote. Okay, let's vote again, please. Boarding on the motion, subsequent, sorry.
Just uh, um, are we good? We've got all the votes.
Display the votes, please. Okay, that is defeated. Any other, so, Constable Wright?
I'm not sure whether I have a subsequent or not. I just wanted some clarification, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
From administration first. Oh, I did sign up, but I guess it's gone. Okay. Um. So, and I think uh we all received an email from Dennis Thomas with um North Saskatchewan River Valley Conservation. Um, to make sure that we are protecting our, our river valley, our natural areas. But I think this is work that's already going on. Um, but I just want to make sure that. We are protected. And the only reason I was thinking of introducing it as a subsequent is if you're already working on maps. Um, one of the, um, one of the conditions that they wanted was deleting the nodes and corridors um from the district plans. As it affects the, the river valley areas.
So we are not intending to work on the maps in terms of uh deleting uh corridors that go over bridges. And have an appearance of introducing development opportunities within the river valley and ravine system. Uh, because the policy that is within the plans, within the, in the policy table, defers to the ARP. So that is like in our, um, in the, the deference to different, to plans, we defer to the ARP and that rules. We also have uh policy C five three one, C five two four A, as well as the top of bank policy, uh, five four two. That all protect our natural areas. So there is no concern from administration that we are introducing any uh development potential within our natural areas or the river valley and ravine system.
Okay, so for instance, major corridor over the um James McDonald Bridge, you're not going to go and build. Houses or commercial or anything along.
Correct.
Okay, because the other ones.
The other ones rule.
Okay, okay, um. Okay, and you're, you're still doing other work as well, um, with the river valley modernization and everything? You're in consultation with the, these groups?
Yeah, the river, we, we were at a committee uh with the river valley modernization work and that work is advancing to public hearing later this year.
Okay. Okay, I think, I, I think I'm satisfied and, and I, I hope the other groups are satisfied as well. Okay, thank you very much.
Follow-up um with the, those groups um next week, so can ensure that there's clarity uh around that we're not introducing any new development potential in the river valley as a result of district plans.
Okay, and yeah, so we've already got sort of those guardrails in place that we're not gonna, okay. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Constable Wright. Any other subsequent? Okay, I see none. So. Private reports. Motion, no motion pending? No motion pending, okay. And notice the motions are motions are customary notice?
Don't jinx it.
We are adjourned at four forty-one, nineteen minutes before the scheduled end of the meeting.